Four September at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting of the Village of North Hudson to order. Short invocation. Father, our nation, help our nation with its unbelief. Lead us into a renewed relationship with you. Forgive us when we find fault in our brothers. Help us to look beyond their shortcomings and look deeper within ourselves to become better people. Forgive us when we fall short of doing all that you've called us to do and when we fail to demonstrate love and forgiveness toward those who wrong us. Thank you for the blessing of knowing that we are forgiven no matter what. Roll call, please.
Trustees Leaf, here.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustees Zeiss.
Here.
Zaffa.
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of seven August and emergency board meeting of twenty-three August. Is there a motion?
Yeah, may I move approval? Can I do for both meetings or we have to do them individually?
You should be able to do both.
Can remove. I'll move. May I move approval for both those meetings, please?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any corrections, amendments, or adjustments? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item three is comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And so, if we've got a house full tonight, so if you'd like to make comments, step up to the microphone, state your name and your address and your business. And you guys were first, so I guess.
My name is James Pruden, P-R-U-D-E-N. My address is six twelve Michelson Street, North. This is my first board meeting in the Village of North Hudson after living here for five years. To be honest, I guess I didn't really know that these were public meetings, but I'm glad that I found out for this meeting that it is public. I was informed through social media that the Village of North Hudson was having the same issue as the City of Hudson for keeping the EMS, the St. Croix EMS, within North Hudson instead of farming out to Fairview. So, I guess I am in favor of keeping the St. Croix EMS in North Hudson. And the Town of Hudson, they know our community, they know our roads, they know our people. They are our community for the most part. And I think this should be a, something that should be potentially voted outside of a board meeting, that it should involve the residents of the Village of North Hudson. A comment that was made before with the president of the board, he claimed that when the time is called, when God comes and calls you, that it's your time and timing doesn't matter. I don't believe in that. I think timeliness of the essence, especially for stroke victims. It's not minutes, it's seconds that make a difference in life or death or what could happen the rest of their life with the outcome of that stroke. So, it's not minutes that comes into this, it's seconds. And with how far EMS is stationed right now and the potential of it moving, timing is crucial. I'm a father of two children. I couldn't imagine that if something happened to them and it made the difference of having the St. Croix EMS come there and save their life, or my wife's life, or my life, compared to something that might be out ten, twenty, thirty minutes later, it's a life or death difference. And I think that I would highly advise of keeping the St. Croix EMS within village.
Since this is on the docket, we can, I can answer that.
No. It's not a public hearing.
We can answer. We had a public hearing last week, so.
Last month.
There'll be discussion later on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, once we get to the topic.
When we get to the vote.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Anybody else?
Right at the pre-stage.
My name is Gwen Anderson, ten twenty-three Willow River Road, North Hudson. I'm here the same reason James is. I feel the EMS should be a referendum. I feel it should be the residents' decision, not the board's. It's also very important to me to have EMS services. I too have a young daughter. I also had a mother who had a stroke, and had she had not had ambulance services right away, she may have died. Sorry, I'm nervous. So, I just want to second what James had said. I think that this should be on a referendum. Thank you.
Jason Warner, one one two seven Bald Eagle Road Drive, here in Hudson. Like these folks, I'm here because I heard that we were talking about potentially eliminating EMS out of North Hudson. I attended also the Hudson meeting. I really wish that this was brought up more like a referendum or give more people opportunity to speak. Again, I don't think it should be something that should be just quickly decided by the council, or if there has been other discussion, maybe publish that, make it more available to everybody so that they know what's going on. I pay attention to the EMS from Hudson, and I was totally surprised to hear about this. And when I attended that to hear that there had been meetings about this in North Hudson, and they were, North Hudson was against it versus what was going on in Hudson, I didn't even realize that there was a separation of those two services between North Hudson and Hudson. So, I would be more for it to be staying here in North Hudson or using Hudson services. Thank you.
Going once, going twice. On to item four. Amended, and thank you for your participation. Amended Class B slash Class B liquor license for extended premise Village Inn, Saturday, September twenty-second, twenty eighteen, approval requested. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the amended extended use, or extended premises, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, River Valley Deer Management, approval requested. Is there anybody here from that group? Alon Faye this year? This is, I don't know, we're on.
No issues, Steve.
Ten years that we've been doing this? I think pretty close.
Maybe close.
I would say seven to eight.
Seven? Yeah, I was gonna say seven to ten, something in that range. But the hunters, they've lost a couple of those apparently over the years, but they're down to four, and the chief has checked them out, and they're, I believe they're the same four that have been hunting just about since the inception of the, of the program. I'd like to, I wish Lon was here so we'd know how the, how successful they've been, but apparently not. So, is there a motion to?
Stan, I'll move to approve the agreement between the Village of North Hudson and the River Valley Deer Management Group again.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there comments or questions? It has been a safe and fairly successful over the years, although people with, that still have, that call me and have the deer eating their hostas, I'm sure they're probably not as happy with the program as, as been said. But we've got, you know, a program that's been working and, and hopefully it'll continue to be successful. So, it's a contract, so Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Number six, requested for a holiday display at Pepper Festival Park, discussion and possible actions.
You need to approve the applications.
Yeah, there's, there was a B there.
Hunter applications.
Yeah, we did the contract, but.
Right. Well, that's usually part of the.
There's a motion.
In the past.
Oh, is it?
There's a motion to approve for people.
For the program, yeah.
Do we wanna?
Well, if you think, I mean, if you think that's necessary, I mean, before in the past, we just did the contract that covers the hunters, the second portion of it was, you know, who the hunters are, so.
I just, I know that chief went and reviewed them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stan, can I move to approve the application of Lon Faye, Bradley Coulter, Ricky Kraus, and C.R. Hackworthy for, for participation in the Village of North Hudson Deer Management Program during the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen season?
I'll second that, Stan.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So, chief, do those need to be separate each time?
I think it's nice because they're actually the four applicants, and those are the four that you're approving. So, you want a fifth person that comes along, I can say the board hasn't approved your application, and then they can.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Keep it separate.
Thank you. Okay. Next is request for a holiday display at Pepper Festival Park, discussion and possible action.
May I move approval of the applicant to, have an application for temporary seasonal holiday displays at Pepper Fest Park?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion.
So, is this the application that we're voting on, or what? Is there an actual application?
Well, we do have the actual application and a fee set up that.
Right.
It was discussed last year.
I know.
But we didn't have the full board, you know, so.
Okay. So, is this a specific group that wants a display? Or is this just the application?
Just the application in any group that wants to, you know, participate and pay the fee and, you know, put in the appropriate, you know, I mean, pay attention to the rules that are stepped out in the, in the application.
Just to clarify, we haven't received.
Okay.
Anything, application filled out, but however, the request is there, and if the board were to approve it, this is a guideline set I would like to have approved with it.
But, you know, just to be clear that, you know, you can say no to everybody, but you, once you open the door, you open the door to everyone. Whether it's a, you know, whatever religion or non-religion or group or whatever, so just everyone be aware of that. These sorts of things can generate a lot of legal action and publicity and.
Right.
Problems.
Oh, no. As long as everybody's allowed, I mean, that's, the Supreme Court has ruled on that several times.
Yep. So, let me ask you this. Once we approve this, these applications could come in and go to Melissa, and the board wouldn't know anything about who's applied?
Not necessarily.
Do we want? I guess we can't.
No, we just.
That's where the issue comes in.
So, we're a lot, we're basically saying to Melissa, you have to approve anybody that comes in.
That follows these guidelines.
That follows these guidelines.
The guidelines.
Whether you agree with the message that they're conveying or not.
Right.
Yeah, and this is, this is, you know, as it was proposed, it was, it was a test to see, I mean, if it's gonna be ridiculous out there, I mean, you know.
How hard is it for us to pull this back? Like next year, we say, so is this a one-year application we're approving? Or is it?
Oh, they have to, they have to apply every year.
It's once.
So, once we put this on the books, I'm saying if we don't want to do this next year.
You could rescind it next year.
We can rescind it.
Yeah.
The application form.
Yeah.
All of it.
All of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there might not be anybody who wants to put a Christmas or a holiday decoration. So.
Is this all year, or is it?
No, no, no. Just.
No, there's.
Is there dates?
From the fifteenth to December to January two.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're basically saying it's a Christmas display, more or less, by saying that timeline?
It's December fifteenth through January second in number seven in the.
Yeah.
First come, first served basis because of limited space?
Space and electrical outlets?
Just reading this?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Well, I, you know, last year, you know, I voted no on this because of stuff I had not had time to research. The Supremes took care of this.
Yeah.
After I ran into trouble with it in the early eighties in a church situation. At the end of the eighties, the Supremes took care of that issue, so I, I don't have the same issue this year that I had last year. I just, I kind of agree with our attorney. It's kind of opening a can of worms, but.
It's a, it's kind of a practice run to see how our community can handle stuff like this. So, the second it goes bad, that's when we'll decide to pull it away. If not, we can see if we can be civil adults.
Yeah, you really have two issues to, one is just the different groups. You can't discriminate against any group. And then the other potential issue is just someone litigating with the village over providing public space to promote a religion, regardless of what it is. The whole separation of church and state argument.
Sure can't do this in China.
So, if you're gonna prove it, just approve it with your eyes wide open.
Mm-hmm.
No doubt. Any further discussion? And so, we'll do a roll call, Tim.
Yes.
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 No.
Nope.
Passes on four to two. Five to two. Next item is new business from the board or staff. President's comments are first, and I'd just like to remind everyone, please remember next week is September eleventh, and remember the thousand, or the thousands of citizens that were murdered and the first responders that were killed trying to help them on September eleventh. I hope everyone never forgets that day. Melissa?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Plan Commission did not meet. Personal and Finance Committee, claims approval requested.
Stan may move to approve the September two thousand eighteen non-recurring claims of sixty thousand thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second. I did.
Oh, is there a second? Further discussion, sorry, I wasn't ready. No further discussion. Roll call, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, item B is withdrawal from EMS contract, discussion and possible actions. And the issue statement, the village, village's contract with St. Croix EMS is a rolling five-year contract which has automatic yearly renewals. If the village wishes to cancel the automatic renewal, is required to give written notice on, of non-renewal to the City of Hudson by September thirtieth of the contract year. The village will be obligated to, one, pay its outstanding share for purchased capital assets approved and made prior to the non-renewal notice, plus interest, as provided in the capital cost amortization schedule and the capital cost interest schedule when purchased and financed over a five-year period. Item two, pay for the capital assets purchased after giving non-renewal notice on a prorated basis for the five-year notice. So, the suggested motion is recommend to the village board to have a written notice of non-renewal sent to the City of Hudson for emergency medical and ambulance service by September thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. That's a motion, so is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion.
So, to address some of your concerns, even though we are saying no at this point in time, we're still on it for five years, because that's the way the contract we signed last year stipulated.
Yeah, so, like, what you were talking about was almost two different issues. Like Hudson was arguing over just getting a whole different one. We're, we're looking at contracts. So, we would still have them for five years, and after that fifth year, if we didn't have anything, it still would be Hudson's obligation to work with us, so we would still have the same exact people. The cost would just come onto more to you guys.
The costs, no, the costs go out.
To the user.
To the user.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It becomes a, instead of a contract with the village.
Yeah, exactly.
It goes back to the end user that makes the call.
There is.
So, the service is still there.
Yeah, so it's this other EMS that people are bringing up was.
But it also gives us an opportunity to look at other services during the next five years.
In five years, yeah.
So, is it auto renewal right now?
Correct.
For the five years, or did you guys auto renew last year?
We auto-renewed last year for the.
Still four years left.
December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yes. So, we're, we're good for five years, and it gives Hudson an opportunity to figure out what they're gonna do, which it seems like it's a little in flux right now. And then it gives us an opportunity to look at other options and still commits us to five years of capital spending that they might do.
So, I guess when it comes to these meetings, if you're not deeply involved in.
Does he need to be up here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be.
Should be.
Otherwise, they can't tell.
Anybody that wants to argue with him, go up there.
No, just, it's not a public hearing, and we wanted to hear your, you know, we want to try to explain this because there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Yep, no, and I appreciate that, because.
And, yeah, and so, we, you know, that's the whole thing about this, is like, hey, there's a, you know, when you, a couple of things that you, when you were making comments, it's like, oh, that's not quite accurate, but, I mean, we can go from there.
And, you know, I, I might be, you know, a little ignorant when it comes to all the facts, and I'll, I'll be the first to admit it, but I didn't know about this meeting until last week. So, unless you're deeply involved into the board, this is a, this is a moot point, and we don't, we don't know what's going on in the community. And maybe, this is an eye-opener for, for me as a resident. I'm sorry?
I'm being heard.
Then you know what?
Steve, I, I don't want to dispute, I understand, there's a lot of things I miss too. This has been going on for more than a year.
We had the same.
It's been going on.
Idea last year.
And the papers had it, it's been in the paper a lot, and it's a pretty big discussion in Hudson, and that bleeds over into North Hudson, Town of Hudson, the other partners. And I, it is easy to miss stuff, but this, you don't, you don't have to be deeply involved in the board to know this has been going on for a long time. We've been talking about it for, it's been on the plate for at least a year here at every board.
And I, I guess I'm in this, you know, generation of social media, and maybe this is an eye-opener for, for me as a resident of my community that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I need to be involved more because I, I am a father of two, and so, I, I apologize for not being informed of all the information, and, and I thought this was something that was, had to be decided by the end of this month in order to have it, you know, October first. So.
Okay.
That makes me feel better as a resident that we have at least four more years before we, you know, go back to the drawing board and make a decision, so.
So, you're gonna come to more meetings?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I stand corrected, I shouldn't have had you get back up, because we're not actually in a public.
Yeah, but it's for me.
For explanation minutes and for, you know.
Right. So, the public actually hears, I mean, because one of the things with the social media is like, a lot of that hasn't been really accurate. I mean, as far as the facts go, and, and, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion there, and, and there has been ever since after going on. But to make sure that everyone knows, even if the five years goes on and we did not have a contract with them, they would still respond to a nine-one-one call, because, you know, that's just part of the deal. Like, we have a similar situation, the Town of Warren. Part of our EMS, St. Croix EMS's area, district is out in Town of Warren near Roberts. Well, they didn't want to have a contract, so they pay a user fee. It's a little bit rated, it's pro, you know, higher rated than if you had a member, you know, you're paying a member service, but they, Hudson still responds out there, and, you know, and the same thing would happen, and if we had it here. I mean, with, you know, reading the paper and stuff like that, that, that they've got some issues down there, and this gives us an option to say, hey, you know, we want out in case they can't resolve what they've got going on, you know? I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen five years from now, and I don't know if they do.
So, out of curiosity, is this the same, is there a same issue for our fire department as the EMS?
No.
They have a contract that we wanted that EMS wouldn't take.
Yeah. Fire, it's, it's built out differently, I mean, we paid a different, you know, fee schedule with that, and, and that, fire department, you know, I mean, by state law, we don't have to have a contracted ambulance service as the village. The town has to have a contract. I don't know who wrote those laws, but that's what's on the books down there.
And, I'm sorry, go on, Stan.
Go ahead, Kirk.
I was just gonna say, and Stan's been on the EMS committee for.
I don't know, six, seven years.
Six, seven years. So, he, I mean, I don't know if you know more people than in this area that are more in-depth to this actual conversation, and we feel that this is the best play for us, and we are not taking this lightly. Like, we have gone through meetings after meetings, we met with the police chief, or the EMS chief that now is kind of getting railroaded, and we see that situation, it makes us really nervous, because we really thought he was gonna be the one to unite us. I mean, showed up for the last two meetings to put his sense in, and then that's kind of gone. So, we're not, this isn't just a fly-by-the-whim of making decisions, we've really dug ourselves in and thought about it.
And another thing that came up is we showed them an equitable cost-sharing program spreadsheet, it would, you know, for each of the people that you guys were covering, each of the towns, cities, villages. And we asked them to just do it equitably, and they came back with no. So, that brought us to here.
So, I would say, oh, sorry. I would also say it's not your response, it's not your fault that you didn't know about this issue. I think hearing all of you tonight has just validated what I've been saying here, is that people just don't know. And it's up to us to help inform. And I know we've, we've publicly noticed, we've had public hearings, but I think we're all responsible to get the word out to as board members, to, to talk to people about this issue. So, I, I, this is a terrible situation that we're in and that the EMS is in, but I worry about all the residents being informed, and I also worry about, to everybody else's point, about five years from now, or if the situation with EMS necessitates something sooner than that, response time here. So, I don't know that I'm in agreement with all you guys. I, I think we should stick in the contract.
Okay.
We've read emails to people. That's what we're here for.
I mean, there's not that many residents in the Village of North Hudson that we can't get a mailer and just know what's going on with. It's not like we're picking a new waste disposal company to take over our contract in the village. It's probably really not.
Just so everybody's aware, the agendas are published in the paper, and they're also on our website. There's a lot of information on the website. The public hearing notice was published in the paper, a good three weeks probably before the meeting. So, those are places to look for the agenda.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, roll call vote, Kathy?
No.
Phil?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
That'd be five, two. Motion passes. Okay. Next item, number ten, Public Works Committee, recommendations, chair update.
Stan, we, we did meet. There is a letter that, that went out to the village. It's, so, just to, in case you folks, it went out August thirty-first, public involvement meeting. It has to do with the Highway thirty-five project, which is coming in two thousand twenty-one. You might wanna check your mail for it if you're a resident, and it explains, uh, that they're having informational meetings related to that, so just wanna make you all aware of that. Um, Public Works discussed a snow removal contract, we got that sent out to, uh, our contractor to see, and left it at the same ATV, UTV. Um, I, after looking at, uh, public safety meeting minutes, it looks like we might have been working on two different documents, so I'm going to the next public safety committee meeting to make sure that we're working on the same document and that we can finalize the, the wording of it, and let the public safety bring it to the board for the October meeting. We did, we're starting to look at, uh, water maintenance, a review on the lease, which was done in nineteen seventy for cost, the costing formula where, um, Hudson's paying us back to lease our water pipes essentially, and that formula hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy, so we're starting to look into that. Um, the Riverside dri- uh, Riverside Drive lift station failed, and we had an emergency board meeting to get the parts ordered, which was done, when?
Yeah, what was that, uh, Thursday.
Thursday, and we expect them in.
Six to seven weeks.
Six to seven weeks, so that's why the emergency meeting, as you all know where Riverside's lift station is, it's down low, and it does a lot of work to push uphill, so we've got that, uh, repair coming, we completed cedar, correct? And we flushed everything. Um, we are, we were still, after we finished, we were still seeing a lot of unflushable wipes come through. We had the, uh, we had Hudson come in and, what'd you call it, jet?
Jetted it.
Jet the pipes all around that lift station that flow into that, and as we jetted it, they were coming. So, I don't know if the residents just don't care, it's gonna cost them more in taxes if they keep flushing those unflushable wipes, but, uh, our new, uh, equipment that's in there should handle them better, and it's gonna push them down to Hudson. The Riverside dri- uh, Drive Lift Station though is next on our list, uh, we also received a update on Gerard, uh, which is behind, it's gonna be behind, uh, Quick Trip, that's a new development going up there.
There's a bank, Quick Trip's not there yet.
All right, so, they are starting to move on that.
It was a year and now.
I think we'll start seeing some development happen soon. Harrison North is proceeding on schedule at this, the new schedule at this point in time, is the last layer down, do you know? Okay.
That's mid-September.
That's what?
Mid-September.
Mid-September, and on the salt shed, uh, that's all been approved, and we have started work on that, and anticipate it to be done by.
Before it snows.
Before the first salt delivery, which is already scheduled, right? So we're gonna be saving some money with this new salt shed, that's the idea, we won't be renting salt space, and we'll be able to get the right amount that we need for each season. We also discussed some of the deterioration of retaining walls, uh, they're, they are, they are not getting hurt as bad now that we have the new plow truck, which can actually meter the salt instead of sending it, you know, miles and miles away, so, um, that's it. Nothing to bring forward.
Great, thanks, Brian, uh, next is Public Safety Committee, Mark?
We have no action items, any, anything you'd like to bring forward, Chief?
Yeah, just to trusty vice point, um, I'm not sure exactly what minutes that you were reading are, are the discrepancy, but Public Safety has pushed forward, um, some verbiage on the UTV ATV ordinance that, uh, the attorney has reviewed, and, uh, part of the processes that the DNR also has to take a look at the ordinance, and so I, I believe that it's been forwarded to them. Uh, we expect that it should come to a board vote hopefully in October, I don't even think it's on the agenda for the next Public Safety meeting, to be quite honest with you, because it's been forwarded on. Um, my, my officers are being trained on September thirteenth in the twen- the state statute twenty-three point three-three, the ATV, UTV, uh, statute, which is quite extensive, the DNR is gonna come in, it's not something we've ever had to enforce, so we are gonna be educated on the different forms, a drunk-driving offense with an ATV has different, wholly different forms than it does for a vehicle, and so we have a learning curve that we're gonna have as far as trying to enforce some of the different rules and regulations that are state law, as well as any of the other ordinance, um, pieces that the, the board may approve that are, uh, more restrictive than state law, which the board is allowed to do, you can't be less restrictive than state law, but you can be more restrictive. The Public Safety Committee has put forward a couple of items that would be a little bit more restrictive than state law, and so there's a, a bit of a process to get us up and running, um, if in fact the ord- the board does move forward, but I'd rather have my officers trained prior to going to place than trying to play catch-up, and for the first month, you know, we have people running amok, if you will.
Well, it's not like you guys got extra time for stuff like that being shorthanded.
We're a little bit short-staffed currently, yes.
Okay, um, so it came up again at last Public Works meeting, and we listened to Tim give us some of the new verbiage, but I thought it was going to the board for approval of the ordinance before it went to the DNR.
Well, I think that if the board approves an ordinance that's not approved by the DNR, we're kind of putting a cart before a horse.
DNR does not have to approve this ordinance.
They don't have to, but wouldn't you prefer to be in, in compliance with the state statutes related to ATV, UTV?
Well, the last one that we submitted was virtually twenty-three thirty-three with the addition of ferry landing. That's what the last ordinance that we had, that we looked at.
Submitted to whom?
Yes, well, that's what came out of the last Public Works meeting, and we thought we sent it on to you, but had trouble getting documents to you a couple of times, so I'm not sure you were working off the same one we were.
I was, I was, and, and I had brought forward to the Public Safety Committee the, the dra- original draft version, the version that you all had looked at, and basically said to them, this is what I would like to see come from the old, the, the original draft.
Okay.
And be added into what you were working on, so we basically took your ordinance, um, or the ordinance that you had been working through in Public Works, and added a few, uh, additional restrictions, one being, uh, we looked at the, um, age of the driver.
Right.
Uh, one being whether or not the driver should have a helmet up to a certain age.
Right.
Um, being that they should be operating in a single-file manner versus having, you know, four wide across the street or some other, you know, version, so really it was taking some of the original draft language, and, and we did include, um, a, a bit of an adjustment to the ferry landing to make sure that it, the definition or the verbiage was the same as what was in our statute. So ferry landing from the gate to the river is called a pedestrian mall.
Right.
We wanted to call that out and make sure that we were talking about the same thing.
So you clarified that.
We clarified it would be the pedestrian mall, which is the gravel portion of Galahad Road down to the river, so we did include that, uh, that verbiage. So, I mean, if, I obviously can forward on to you, or Melissa can, uh, the, the, kind of the current version that got forwarded on.
Did it, who sent it on to the DNR?
I, I guess I thought the attorney was, if it hasn't been, then. Okay, then apparently it has not been sent.
I think the only, the reason I thought it was coming to the board, it was that we wanted to make sure that we were sending the DNR what our final ordinance was. So you're saying you think the DNR may come back and wanna adjust the ordinance before it gets to the board?
I, I just would like them to see it, so if we have any major changes, we don't have people that are out there doing something, and then a month later, we have to tell them they can't do this thing, whatever it may be.
Well, the.
I think we fall within, I, I believe that the ordinance that's pushed, pushed forward from Public Safety falls within all of their, their guidelines.
Right, except, now, there was one thing that we, I think you added no side-by-side, I got that, but there was a, some verbiage about they need to be single-filed on the right side of the road?
Correct, just like a, a car would, so a moped, motorcycle, any, any vehicle operating has to be on the right side of the road.
Okay, so you weren't referencing them like running right next to the shoulder?
No.
That they had to be, you know, away.
Not in the parking lane, no, they should be in the lane of traffic on the right side.
What we looked at wasn't real clear about that, I, I, I understood you didn't want side-by-side, and I totally agree with that, cause they're not bikes.
Right.
They're wider, they're more like a car.
Right.
But I, I couldn't tell from the verbiage if you were saying that they needed to specifically stay to the right side of the right lane. That's what I couldn't understand.
Okay, and if, if we need to clarify that, so that all the rest of the people that are gonna be reading it, just like you did, so it makes sense to them, I, I don't mind adding language that would help identify that, but.
This is for the riders coming from England.
Can we just.
They'll be riding on the other side of the road.
Can we, as a board, look at it in the October meeting, um, before it goes to the DNR? Or does it matter? Cause he said the DNR does not have to approve this.
Well, if the DNR doesn't, I mean, if we don't get it in there pretty dang soon, we ain't gonna have an ordinance, cause DNR can sit on it, and then we won't have nothing going through.
The DNR does not have to approve.
But they should review it, they need to review it.
I get that, but we went with twenty-three thirty-three from soup to nuts, I mean, that's their law.
Okay. I don't think the DNR is gonna object.
The state does the law, not the DNR.
I, I don't think they will object anything, I don't know their turnaround time.
But do we have to have a turnaround time, that's what I'm asking you, the DN- if the DNR does not have to approve this, they just have to be informed.
Well, if they find something that would be against the state law, then they can object to it.
But we went.
There's too many vi- villages and municipalities that already have it in, how, what are they gonna object to?
I know.
So they should review a process, I agree, the DNR should review it, and then it comes to board for approval, cause you wanna make sure it comes to board.
But see, when you're saying that, you're saying that they need to approve it.
No, I said to review it, they should review it, they need to review it.
All, all I'm saying is, once the board has approved it, we send it to them, cause we're done. Unless I'm missing something. Lawyer?
I, I think you can do it either way, huh?
Yeah, I'm.
However you prefer. Did, did you say you already sent it to them?
I have not, I, I was under the impression the village attorney had, so, my misunderstanding.
Better decide who's gonna send the letter and see.
I just think at this point, we put it on possibly on the October.
Yeah, so if we do it.
Agenda?
If we do it your way, it's gonna take an extra month, cause we would have to wait, we'd have to wait till next month to approve it.
Prove it.
Well, we haven't approved it already. Well, this, but it's a process, so if we do it the other way, they send it to us, we can maybe get an approval for next month. If we do it your way, there's no way we're getting it this month.
Well, and it's already not on the agenda for this month, so it would have to go to October anyway.
Yeah.
October, yeah, October, yeah, October.
You're adding, thirty more days.
Stan, I suggest we move on and possibly put it on the October agenda?
Well, it's definitely gonna be on the October agenda.
And we can make the other decisions.
No question about that, yeah.
Okay.
To move on.
Thank you.
I would, I would just send it to them and say, we're gonna vote on this in October. Yeah, we start the process earlier.
Thank you, Chief.
And so to be clear, who's sending it to them?
I will send it. So that someone does.
Yeah. All right, next is, uh, Public Welfare, Kirk, you didn't mind meet?
Um, uh, which one?
Welfare?
No.
And thirteen, Park Board?
Uh, we did not meet, but we did have a movie in the park, it was a wonder, and it was wonderful.
So would you say it was a success?
I do, I mean, the first one was sixty-plus, second one, it was like seventy, second one was fifty, this one was only fourteen, but, I mean, even dealing with fourteen people, I'm okay with it, cause it's children. Good job, PJ, I'd like to say thank you to you, and then, um, what, uh, Jim? Jim for always bringing the popcorn and being a trooper. It was a success.
That's good.
Hopefully next year we can get it rolling more.
Okay, uh, hearing, is there anything else? The next one is adjournment at seven twenty, or seven forty.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.